Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid 11th Avenue, 4th floor Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come to you and thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the many opportunities that you give us to follow you and to trust you. And we pray for our Commissioners today and their staff and the decisions that they have to make for the county. Continue to give them the wisdom and knowledge that they need to govern our county and we know that they'll do it with integrity, Father, and honesty, so we thank you for that. And we thank you for just uniting our county together so that we can get the job done. And we thank you for the people that live in Lorraine County too, and we just believe you for brighter days in 2015, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 18th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the kennel today. Nice, big, beautiful dog.
Great dog. Come here. Here he comes. Hi there. You want to turn around? You want to look at me here? Turn around. Come on. There you go. See? Our featured dog this week is a male, German Shepherd collie mix. He was found in Grafton. A great personality, he's just a wonderful dog. Everybody here's been enjoying him this morning. He's available for adoption on Friday, the 20th, and we have a dozen dogs right now in the kennel? Fifteen dogs in the kennel, so please stop by. They love a great home, especially in light of how cold it is. Wouldn't it be nice to have one of these guys at home?
It's a three-dog night, so gotta go get three of them.
You're showing your age.
Madam Clerk, we're gonna push up the presentation so everybody here from your group that's gonna be presenting, or is Joan gonna be here also?
Joan's not here.
Okay. If you guys want to go first, we can do that. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you guys for your time. Commissioners, Mr. Cordez, everyone else. My name's Mike Sherrill, and I'm on the board chair for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lorraine County. We're here today to present to you and to the public a milestone for our organization. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lorraine County provides a safe framework for the mentoring of children in our county. We've been doing that for 20 years as of the end of 2014, so we are one of 250 nationally-affiliated organizations across the United States with the National Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America Organization. Our program was started out of the...so it was recognized out of the Leadership Lorraine County class of 1994 that there was a need for mentoring, specifically coming out of the Guardian Ad Lightum Program from the court system. So that class initiated a project to create what is now today Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lorraine County. We've served nearly 2,000 children in our community in the last 20 years. So it's pretty monumental that we have this service in our county. What we're trying to do is obviously get some recognition. We're always looking for male mentors and obviously financial backing. But the fact that we have this resource in our county is a feather in the hat of what we do here to serve our children. Our mission is quite simple: change the lives of children for the better forever here in our county. We do that through one-to-one mentoring. We're the only organization in the county that provides specific framework for that. I've been a board member since February of 2009, so five years, and I'm just finishing up my board chair term, and I'll be done in June. I did it and continue to believe in the organization because I believe we need to give back to our communities. And the work that we provide to our communities helps to make them stronger. It builds up the framework that we need in order to have a strong community. I feel it's a great start to help children. We are passing...if we're passing on good values and building a moral compass and showing kids that someone cares is a solid foundation in order to grow our community. We've been doing that here, as I said, for 20 years. Always looking for male mentors and financial backing. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa Day, who's the director and has been the director for 19 of the last 20 years. Lisa?
We do have a short video, so let's see if we can...
It helps me a lot.
There we go.
She's got a great influence on me. Like, if I wanted to do something with my friends, if I had an if, she'd thought about it, you know, I'd just think about what Lois would do, and I'd do the right thing. It's great. And I try to be a good role model. I mean, there's, you know, I've never smoked, but, you know, that drinking and, you know, we can talk about if her, you know, she sees some people smoking at school or, you know, people...we talk about drugs and we talk, you know, talk about, you know, the right choices to make. And, you know, I think that helps her to bounce ideas off of me.
She's here for a lot, so it kind of helps me build myself as a leader, which is a very important asset for me. It kind of changed my perspective on life a lot.
We just naturally provide the things that our children need through our volunteers because all of our children need someone to be there who's gonna be supportive regardless. We're gonna be there for them.
What's really interesting about that, too, one of the big sisters in the Lunch Buddy Program thought, "How can such a short amount of time make a difference?" And then she started paying attention, and she saw the look on that little girl's face when she turned the corner and saw her. And then she started talking about how this is the only person who's there just for her. Any other time during the whole week, there's all these other kids around, and it has measurable impact. The Illyria City Schools tracked their attendance and tracked their grades, and their attendance went up. And for those in a long-term match who were matched for at least six months or longer, they had no unexcused absences.
So you can see why it's an organization that you stick with. I have been with the organization now 19 years, coming on board right after the leadership class started the initiative. In the beginning, they met every two weeks. They did their 501(c)(3) filings, they did everything. At the time, I was with the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, which is a program of the Office of Aging, and I was in the fortunate position of supporting all of the different charities in the county and most government agencies that used volunteers. And so over those first couple of years, back in the community after coming out of the Air Force, it gave me a really good insight as to all the different services that are offered. And at that point, I was actually starting an intergenerational mentoring program because mentoring just...there's just nothing like it. And so for me, that's why I've been here for so long, and I think that's why so many, like Lois Pazega on the video, has been a long-term big sister. And it's not overwhelming to take one child. It's totally overwhelming if you think about the community and the community needs, but it's not overwhelming one child at a time. And we have a population of 300,000, a little better, right?
Right.
Seems to me as if we could find a volunteer for every child who's in need. So our organization is one of, like Mike said, one of 250 in the state...or in the nation, and then I have the handout here where all the organizations are in Ohio. And I also brought along a quick facts on our Amachi Program. Our Amachi Program is a special initiative for children who have the unique loss of a parent incarcerated. So they have a parent who's alive but untouchable. And there's all sorts of data about how these kids are just really vulnerable, and so it's a special initiative that we do to break the cycle, simply put. Mentoring's very affordable, especially when you compare it to the costs of incarceration. Incarceration for a juvenile or incarceration in the adult system is just something that we just can't afford as a society, I don't think. So anything we can do to break the cycle and how mentoring breaks the cycle is in a couple of measurable outcomes, and this was done in a double-blind study, you know, but kids who have a mentor are more likely to go to school and do better in school, they're less likely to get involved with drugs and alcohol, so their peer refusal skills are increased, and they get along better with others. So in my opinion, if you're able to stay in school, stay off of drugs, and get along with other people, you have a pretty good shot in not getting discouraged and just dropping out of society and, as we know, the prisons, a huge percent of the population is a drug or alcohol involvement is a component there. So I put together a simple little fact sheet a couple of years ago when I was talking to Matt when he was in Columbus. He was surprised that the Drug and Alcohol Board and the Mental Health Board invest in our program. And so I thought, yeah, it's not top of mind. I mean, who would think about that? Big Brothers, Big Sisters is something we automatically just assume will be there because it's volunteer-run, first of all, and secondly, we don't think about it as a prevention program for these sorts of serious issues because we're taking our intervention at such a young age. We'll start at age six with children, and we'll stay with them until they graduate, and most of their volunteers will stay with them until they graduate college or professional or technical or trade school, whatever they're doing. And if their match closes at the volunteer moves or something, we will reassign the child so that they have that steady presence. We are doing mentoring in all different types of formats, which it's one-to-one, and it's just like basically another way for people to be able to picture themselves doing it. So like the senior citizen in the Lunch Buddy example, you know, middle of the day, the roads are clear, you can get out, do the Lunch Buddy Program at an elementary school. It's really insightful, too, I think, for people to be able to get into a school building because that's kind of like a place that you wouldn't normally just walk into, but to have a reason to go there and to see how hard everybody is working to try to educate our kids. And then spend that time with the child, whatever has happened that morning, you know, somebody said something or they lost their pencil or whatever's on their mind, to have that like relief valve. It makes a big difference, even though it's a very small amount of time. It's a once-a-week commitment, and lunch in a school is half an hour if you're lucky. If we can get it paired with recess, it can be about 40 minutes. So it's something that most people can fit in their schedule, and it's something I'd really encourage the employees here to be able to do because Franklin Elementary is interested in starting a Lunch Buddies Program. We have our traditional program where the volunteer goes to the home, picks the child up, like Mike was dealing with Eli before he moved to Florida, and that's our traditional program. It's been around 110 years. It's an amazing thing, and it works, and they become like brothers. And then we have an after-school program, which is primarily high school students, and the high school students will mentor elementary school students after school, like 2:30 to 4:30. And it depends on the school, what time that they let out. They're all different all across the county. And the teens will come in, will do homework help. If the kids happen to forget their homework, we have worksheets so that they can still be reinforcing learning. A couple months and...a couple times a month, we do Lit Kits, which is bringing in a pair of books and then doing puzzles and things that kids are naturally kind of good at so that builds their self-esteem and it helps them with remembering stories and getting them in practice with reading a story to remember and then to be able to do that in a word puzzle or in a concentration-type game. And then we do a healthy snack or as healthy as we can manage to pull together sometimes. Sometimes that's a little tough. And then they have a chance to just pick their own activity, like they could play Uno game or they can...with another pair, the four of them might play Monopoly or...we tried to make sure that all those games are again strategy and thinking and...but engaging. I mean, this program has to be fun. If it's not fun, it's not firing, you know, in the right part of the brain to...for us to form the relationships. So it's all about the fun, but also in kind of a simple way to bring in other resources. And that's a big part of what we do, too, because we do get to know each child individually. We interview each child, we interview each volunteer, we interview each parent, we're screening for safety for the volunteers, and we also want to make sure that they're consistent and reliable because if...these kids that we're serving have been through so much more than any of us hopefully will ever see in our lifetime, and it would just be wrong to put somebody in their life who doesn't have the ability to at least make at least a six-month commitment on a Lunch Buddy Program. I mean, gosh, we can do that, right? So that's what we work toward on the consistency as well as the child's safety because there are people who say, hey, there's a vulnerable kid, he'll probably attach on to anybody and mean harm to the child. So we have to be vigilant for that, and we have to stay involved in our matches to be vigilant for that. And then for the children and the parents, we get to know them on such an in-depth level that we're making referrals to the other sorts of programs that they need so that we can focus, again, on our one mission because our one mission is big, and we don't need to get into making sure that they have boots to go out in the wintertime, you know, and there are other agencies that are able to do that. So is there anything that I'm neglected to...do you have any questions, maybe?
Yeah, I would just be interested in hearing a little more just about the Lunch Buddy Program because I know there are people have, you know, crazy schedules, but still they'd like to be able to mentor in some way, and maybe the Lunch Buddy might fit into that busy schedule.
Yeah, and the Lunch Buddy also takes away some of that concern about going to the home and picking the child up because you don't get drawn into that. You're meeting them at the school. It minimizes your risk because you're simply not putting them in your car. So that's a really nice way to start. And some of our Lunch Buddy matches, they've been four or five years. There's an attorney over across town, and the child has moved schools just repeatedly, and he just moves with the child and goes to whatever new school. We go in and we get it all set up at the school that he can come in.
Is that once a week, once a month?
So it's once a week. It's just as simple as the child's identified, the teacher makes sure that they're coming out ahead of the class so that they don't get kind of caught up in that standing-in-line business with getting their lunch. And we find a quiet place for them to meet because if we go into the lunchroom and just they sit down with the little in the lunchroom with all the other kids, the other kids vie for that attention because they all want their own. And it would be great to get to that point, but anyway. So we put them in a separate room, and if there's two or three pairs meeting, they can do it that way as well.
That's a wonderful program, Lisa. I mean, in these days of single-parent, no-parent households, with the mentoring, as Mike said, more male role models make a big difference.
Yeah, yeah. Lunch Buddies is in any school that's willing to have us. So we have after-school programs with, I think we're up to about half the districts again. With the...when the recession hit and we took our big budget cuts, that's where we kind of...our program suffered the most because our community-based matches were already established and going, but the Lunch Buddies has a lot of renewal because of that school year commitment because of kids moving from building to building and to have staff on site. So we have one at Summit Academy, and then we have, actually, this is kind of a neat thing, a new thing. We have Lunch Buddies at LCC with Early College High School. And if you recall, Early College High School are the kids who are first in their families to go to college. And so we're pairing them up, and I think we're up to 14 or 15 out there with older vol...not older volunteers, but with older students, you know, like LCC students who are more traditional students pairing with the high school students. And so that's another form. Really, anything that's one-to-one, you know, whatever way we can think it through, just make those connections happen. That's kind of what we're looking to do. If you want to be a volunteer or if somebody you know wants to be a volunteer, most folks are most comfortable just going to the website first, and I think maybe because then they don't think we're gonna stalk them down. We have, just so anybody knows, if you do call and you have questions, we have a three-call-back rule. If you don't...if we've called you three times and you don't call us back, we go ahead and we delete you out of our system because I know that's a worry sometimes for people, too. So the number's 277-6541 if you want to talk to a live person. And if you're not ready to talk to a live person, you can go online to the website, and that's biglorangecity.org. And we usually get a lot of interest about this time of year with our Bowl for Kids' As people go around and get sponsors, it's like a walkathon, you know, can you give me five bucks, I'm gonna walk in this walkathon. But we don't have to worry about the weather because we do it in a bowling alley. And so we do that out at Redmond's, and that's coming up the end of April, and anybody can get involved with that as well. And that simple act, believe it or not, that simple act of asking people to sponsor you, our volunteer inquiries just go up. The more bowlers that we have, there's a direct correlation. The more bowlers that we have that have other people's names on it, didn't just reach in their own pocket, but have other people's names on it and went around, our volunteer inquiries always go up. So we're looking forward to that and hope that that goes well again this year.
Well, I wasn't super familiar with their program and what they did, but Mike had invited me to their fundraiser, the Great Gatsby Casino Night. It was a lot of fun, and just hearing you guys talk about what you do, and it just really inspired me, so that's why I asked you guys to come here today. So spread the word. I mean, people need to know what you guys are all about, and, you know, there's Big Brothers, Big Sisters, there's Boys and Girls Club. I think they get confused, combined, whatever, so I just wanted that separate, you know, so we know what you guys do. You do a great job.
Thank you, Laurie.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, guys.
In the cold. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Ted, I think I might have given you two. Look at the sign you've got on the back. Yep.
Still has the enthusiasm after 19 years. It's great to see that, so thanks for coming, guys. Okay, go to our regular agenda. Okay.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
And bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Number eight, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a number of issues I wish to discuss with the Board in the Executive Session, including personnel. I have some potential hires at Golden Acres. I also wish to discuss potential sale and purchase of real estate and ongoing litigation. All three topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, say we go into Executive Session, we discuss those issues that I've identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Number nine, under the engineer, approve and enter into contract with Solar Testing Laboratories Incorporated in Brooklyn Heights in the amount not to exceed $25,000 to provide general geotechnical and environmental engineering materials testing and construction inspection at a 12-month task order basis to be paid from accounting engineering project. Authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Number 10, enter into an emergency contract with Crossroads Asphalt Recycling Incorporated in Columbia Township to purchase 4,760 tons of air-cooled blast furnace slag for a total delivered cost of $49,980 to conserve the amount of road salt used during the 2015 snow and ice control season to be paid from account road salt.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question on this. A question on this. Are we entering this into emergency because we don't have three quotes? Why are we doing this as an emergency?
Actually, what we did, Mr. Cordez, is in the fall, we typically go out for bids, for three bids, you know, with the $50,000 limit. We issued a contract to Crossroads. They were the lowest and best bidder on that contract. We'd need additional. He agreed to sell us at the same price to get some additional to finish out the season.
Okay, so that's why we're enacting the emergency provisions because coupled together, they would go over the $50,000 threshold?
That's what we thought would be the cleanest to move forward. I'm going next year, we're gonna actually not go to use the $50,000 limit. Next year, we'll actually do a public bid with a...
Yeah, this way, if the threshold is breached, you don't have a problem. I understand. Thank you.
And if I could, while you're still there, I know I received a call from a lady who's asking about the mixture and was also concerned about environmental concerns. I just want to make sure that we have a chance to at least inform people what this mix is like and...
It is a byproduct from the steel. In fact, I believe they're getting almost what they have left in stock probably next year. I think even if we go out to bid, I think Crossroads has traditionally been a supplier that my understanding is they're gonna be out of it next year. Like we mentioned on the phone, Mr. Lundey, we use this as a cost-cutting measure. You try to mix it one-to-one, two-to-one. We can only use the mixture out in the more rural roads when we do have some roads that we have, Curb and Gutters and Stormsours, those roads, we use straight salt. Each year, every year, it seems like with the salt, it's a different dilemma. Last year, the price of salt was cheap. We started running out, so actually the grits actually helped get us through the season with...because again, last year, even on our state bid, we hit the max that we were allowed to purchase. This year, now, the salt went up over $20 a ton. We're up, I think, around $55 a ton. We use it, you know, just as a cost-cutting measure, but even this year, Mr. Domenico, our highway superintendent, let me know that we are getting close to our contract amount this year already because, again, I think most of you are aware, we supply salt, not only for our roads, but several of the villages, the school systems, metro parks, they...we become the supplier of salt for them as well.
And we don't use the slag or other mixtures where the Stormsours are because of clogging issues, right?
Yes. And actually, then, a follow-up for your question. We did get similar complaints last year. The EPA did contact us. I have copies of the, and actually, one of the residents that had contacted you, I forwarded her the information as well. I have the MSDS, you know, the manufacturers...
Safety data sheet.
Yes. I forwarded those to her as well, and there was leachate tests that the supplier has presented. My understanding, last year, the EPA was gonna take their own tests as well to verify the leachate test. I never heard if they actually followed through on that. There was a train of emails that said they were gonna do that. I assume they did, and there was no problem.
I was wondering, too, if you could just quickly touch on, we've been a good neighbor with our neighbors in Huron County, trying to assist them?
Yeah, what happened with Huron County is we in Lorraine County, I think, in my understanding, all the cities and villages in Lorraine County purchased salt through the state bid. Every year, we come forward with a resolution asking to participate in that. Traditionally, Huron County has always gone out on their own for their own bid. I think they were...they did well for years. This year, they did not get any bids, so the county engineer came to us and asked if we could also supply him some salt because actually it came down to the snow and ice season. He had no contract for any salt, so to date, we supplied them about 1,000 tons of pure salt. And I believe he does the same thing, is he mixes it with grits, you know, to try to get that to go through the season.
They probably won't be going out on their own next year.
I, I can't speak on behalf of the county engineer, Carney, but I did, that was Mike, I did ask Joe Kovat, the county engineer, to make me a promise that next year, you go out on the state bid, so you don't get into this dilemma, because it's not, it's not a good situation that you want to be in, because you still have an obligation to keep.
Oh, it was good of you to help out, but, you know, salt demand can be.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number eleven, under Solid Waste, approve and enter into a contract with American Paint Recyclers of Middle Point, Ohio, for the recycling of discarded latex paint.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, did you want to elaborate on this? I know this was added on late yesterday, or?
It was, it was added on late because it lingered on my desk.
Oh.
Let me say, I have, I have a few of Mr. Bailey's things in those stacks on my desk. So, it wasn't his fault. He had it down here very timely.
This is a new company, and that's the reason I wanted to come down today, all right? American Paint is a company that recycles the paint and actually reblends it, and puts it back on the shelf, as their brand name is Eco Tone Paint. We don't know if anybody sells Eco Tone in Lorain County, but we're told that Habitat is interested in selling this paint, so the Restore may be selling it in the near future. They take the paint, they filter it, they reblend, and they recolor it. This, we've moved the full gamut, from boiler fuel on latex to landfill cover, which is what we've been presently using, now back to paint. So, and every time, our price has gone down. And this has potential savings of $15,000 this year, so that's the reason we're wanting to move, make our move to American Paint.
Beautiful, cradle to cradle.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number twelve, approve and enter into a contract with ERG Environmental Services of Bowling Green, Ohio, for the operation of the lamp and ballast collection and recycling program in 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, we're going back with ERG. We went out for proposals and received two. Like I reported the Board three years ago, we're in a different situation we've been in the past, because we're now, we're now an aggregator of large loads of lamps, all right? And what's that mean? Before, we used to hire aggregators to service us, and our price decreased extremely when we become a large aggregator of lamps. And not any, many people can aggregate full 53-foot loads every three or four weeks. We can, and have done historically. Puts us in a better position. Heritage Environmental was the other proposer. There's a sizable cost difference between them and ERG, who we've dealt with now for three years. ERG did put a increase in the, in, in a couple areas, but very, very small. One increase we saw was under UV tubes. They're up three cents apiece. PCB, a ballast, suspect ballast, are down a penny, but we only ship those once a year now, because there's so few in the system. And we did get the fuel surcharge, which was averaging $40 load rolled off this time, so we do have some savings there as well. So we propose and go with ERG for another year, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I see we had quite a robust agenda this morning, although it doesn't seem like the meeting is as exciting as last week.
Maybe we should have invited a few more people.
Dawn. I wish to extend a happy birthday wish to Commissioner Kokowski.
Thank you.
I won't, I won't tell how many, how old you are, but, you know, you've, you've done this 50 times before.
You didn't even have to do the math on that.
What is starting with G?
Oh, you're funny.
So, may you have a very joyous and, and happy day. I, I don't have any additional reports this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
Oh, good.
I have a few things. The Dog Kennel is going to be doing a fundraiser at Bob Evans in Elyria and in Amherst. You will need one of these flyers, so if you're interested, it is going to be on Saturday, February 28th, from 8:00 to 10:00, and Bob Evans will donate 15% of the sales to our dog kennel. So it's good for us. So if you would like one of these flyers, you can contact our office at 329-50100, and we can email it to you or send it to you. I do want to say, we got a dog kennel analysis recently, and our, our dog license sales are up, but the one thing that I'm very, very proud of is the sale of our dogs. In 2010, we generated $9,300, and last year, in 2013, or 14, it was $33,500. So, we're doing just an awesome job of getting our dogs adopted out into families. So I just want to congratulate our kennel on doing such a, a great job. I'm very proud of what they're doing over there. Tom Kelly sent us a, a report. You probably all remember back in May of 2014, we had the big rainstorm. We were able to offer home loans and business loans at low interest to people in Lorain County that had damage. Applied for, for homeowner, homeowner loans, 144 people applied, 78 were approved, and the total loan amount was $2,223,000. Businesses, 13 applied, nine were approved, with a total of $737,000. So, almost $3 million in low-interest loans for our community. And Tom mentioned that they were due to the timely county-wide disaster declaration, and also the hard work of the staff and volunteers that fielded over 1,000 damaged report calls. This is the first time in Tom's 24 years at EMA that the Lorain County has received such a declaration without using numbers from adjoining counties. This truly was a flash flood occurrence that has been called a once-in-a-thousand-year event, usually it's a hundred-year, where six inches of rain fell in one hour and 45-minute time period. So, we need to acknowledge the good work of the EP, Ohio EMA, the field liaison, and Kathy Deck and Leslie Bricker. So, I want to give thanks out, shout out to Tom Kelly and his staff, and everybody that works so hard to get those dollars back to Lorain County and, and help our, our residents there.
Commissioner, also the volunteers that staff our, our center. When we opened the center and we take the calls, we have lots of volunteers that come in. They remain nameless, but they're down there, working for their community. And, and obviously, we opened the center, we were taking those calls, and we had to get the word out. We also had help from the media to get the word out, because we only can make that declaration if we get the information from the homeowners very timely, to get it sent where, with FEMA, so that we can bring resources here. So, our, our guys did a great job, and, but the community helped itself, and the volunteers must be recognized.
Right. And Solid Waste got all the dumpsters out around the county for people that were, you know, had major flooding and had to throw things away, and with the garbage being limited. So, it was a very good community-wide effort to, to help each other, so.
I think we spent, you know, 30,000 or 40,000 on dumpsters.
38,000, yeah.
38,000. That was the second time we took the dumpsters out, used Solid Waste funds to help the communities, because they had no place to put these large pieces of furniture. So, you know, truly, we're able to come together and provide excellent resources for, for the people that were hit hard.
Last Monday, the majority of us met with the directors from Main Street, from Amherst, Oberlin, and Wellington. We had a nice sit-down discussion, a lot of collaboration and cooperation, and working together, hopefully in the future, so we can all have better downtowns. And then yesterday, the, we all three attended the State of the City for Mayor Brenda in Elyria. She had a nice, long presentation, but a lot of information, little bit of information overload, but it was, it was good, and glad we could attend that. And then, it's fundraiser. Got to meet some pretty interesting people there, so we had a nice, nice event. And the chicken wings were awesome.
Wonderful.
They loved, they loved them.
Jack does a very good job.
All right. End of my report.
Okay.
Oh, and from what I'm told, 50 is the new 30, so I'm going to start celebrating my annual 30th birthday now, so.
Yeah, but how many years did we have your 40th birthday?
I know, annual 40th, so, but now I get to go backwards.
I see, I see.
She's the president.
I can do whatever I want.
She's the president.
End of my report.
County Commissioners Association Metropolitan Affairs Committee did a conference call last Wednesday afternoon, that's why I couldn't stay for the Main Street meeting, going over the governor's new budget proposal. A lot of work on it. I was actually speaking to a legislative aide this morning in Columbus about where he thought things were going to go. Major concerns. I mean, when you're talking about raising the sales tax a half a percent to get rid of the income tax, that really has a negative effect on our seniors. So, hopefully, we can come together and push the state to, or at least the governor's office, to relook at his proposal for the budget. So we're looking for all your help, Matt. Yeah, we also had the opportunity, I was on radio, you're CWDW, and I was interviewing you all this morning, like to thank them for the opportunity, talk about the county and what's going on. And again, thank you, everybody who showed up at the fundraiser last night. It was a very good time. End of my report.
Well, had a very enjoyable sit-down conversation with the Main Street groups out of Oberlin, Amherst, and Wellington, and, and, you know, every time that, at Crocker Park, which, just so everybody knows, I shop first at Midway Mall, Avon Commons, and all those places, but occasionally want to run over there, grab a bite to eat. But, but every time I'm over there, I think we've got these natural downtowns. We don't have a fake downtown. We have natural downtowns. So, I just can't encourage people enough to, to support, you know, the main streets throughout this county. They are very active, doing just an awesome job. So, it was good meeting with them this past week. Also, just want to say thank you to the safety crews. You know, I know sometimes in today's culture and on the radio, it's popular to bash government, but I'll tell you what, folks are very supportive and thankful that the, the police and the fire and the sheriff's deputies and the plow drivers are all out there, in weather where most of us were probably inside ordering pizzas and, and not going outdoors. So, thank you to all the, the safety crews and all the, the plow crews that have been out there. The Voices of Democracy that was supposed to have taken place on Sunday at VFW Post 1079, that was canceled. That'll be rescheduled for, for March, recognizing the students for their great work on coming up with their papers describing the Voices of Democracy. Also had a chance with my colleagues to attend Elyria Mayor Holly Brenda's State of the City address yesterday. It was very well-attended, and I guess Mayor Rittenhour gets to step up to the plate on Thursday, so looking forward to, to hearing that as well, too. Had an interesting conference call with Mercy Hospital, which is very concerned about access to care, which is now becoming a national trend because of the aging population. And, you know, we reflect a lot of those same demographics here in this county, an aging population that needs to get to health care, and that's where the transit conversation is so critical that we're having now in this county. Would encourage you to join us for the next transit conversation, which will be March 5th, on this floor, fourth floor, the administration building. We'll begin that at 6 o'clock, go from 6 until 8. We're hoping to have a presentation from Nowaka regarding transit in this region. And then also have plans to attend the Lorain NAACP dinner taking place this Saturday at 6:00 PM at, I believe that's the old KFC, right?
Yes.
On 1620 Kansas Avenue. So, if you get a chance, please come out and support the NAACP on, on Saturday at 6:00 PM at the KFC, 1620 Kansas Avenue. And that's my report.
There's no Clerk's report for today. Board correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Any public comment for today?
Anybody wishing to address the Board today? Seeing none, I move that we go into Executive Session as outlined by the administrator, and not the county, we have nothing, right? Just the county administrator. Okay. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.